From a small dent to major collision repair, Hamilton Paint and Body is here for you. Owners Kim Gwin would like to say thank you for your business.
Northwest Alabama hitting Cooley, blowing away our competition.
Hello, I'm Richard Kitchens, owner of Sports Gallery here on the Court Square in Hamilton. Would like to thank all of our customers and thank you for watching the Hamilton City Council meeting.
Hi, my name is Randy Whitehead, President and CEO of People's Trust Bank. I invite you to view the live streaming of Hamilton City Council meetings every first and third Monday at 6:00 PM.
Get your perfect stay at the Holiday Inn in Gwin off of I-22. Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us, call us at (205) 468-4625.
I'm Rick Chambers with Marion County Funeral Home and Scribe Memorial Chapel in Russell, Alabama. This is Glenn Cochran, our manager out here. Under the laws of Alabama that was passed in 2002, a funeral establishment has to be certified with the state and carry a certificate of authority before they can even talk to anyone when the time comes is guaranteed to be there.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Gwin to Sullivan. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at (205) 921-6712.
Your story starts at Beville State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Beville State has an opportunity that is right for you. With five locations serving seven counties, you don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career check and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
Call our meeting to order. Appreciate everyone coming out tonight, including our department heads and our newspaper and our media, other guests that are here with us. So we'll stand at this time and have our indication as we always do, and then our pledge will get started. Father, we thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for the abundance of rain that you sent. Lord, that we didn't have injury with the storm. We thank you, Lord, that we survived it all and we're blessed with great rain. Lord, we thank you for all blessings that you've sent our way. We ask you to continue with us now in this meeting. May the things we do and say be keeping with your will. And may they be good and beneficial for our communities as we move forward with our business and the work of this community. We ask you, Lord, to be with our country's leaders and make great decisions for our nation. May there be peace on earth again in our day. When they see wars end and people feel safe again in their own communities. I pray, Lord, this prayer Jesus made. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. In way of announcement tonight, I'd like to recognize that Mr. Billy Owen will be joining our zoning board for to fill a vacated spot that we had a term to end. We asked the chairman if he wanted to free up on the board. He says he's retiring, going to be traveling, probably don't want to obligate the board right now. So Billy will be replacing one of our current board members, starting immediately, for a three-year term. We appreciate Billy and his willingness to come onboard and work with us in our zoning. It seems that our zoning board is more and more busy as time goes on. And we're proud of the folks that take care of those matters for us. Item one on our agenda tonight would be a recommendation to approve the minutes from the September 3 city council meeting.
I'll make that motion.
No motion. Scott Tara, we need a second from Ross on this, and we need to vote on that now. All those in favor? Thank you. Item two, it's a recommendation for a lateral transfer of Trey Heron from the wastewater operator, from a wastewater operator at the wastewater plant to the Hamilton Treatment Operation Tramie for the Hamilton Water Treatment Plant. His rate of pay will remain the same. He's agreed for already, so his pay would pay the same. Sherry made that motion, we need a second.
Second.
Second from Ross, all those in favor of that lateral transfer? Okay. Item three would be a recommendation to post a job opening for the wastewater operator tramie or certified operator for the wastewater plant. We need a motion to post that child.
A second.
Sherry made the motion, Scott Robertson second to that motion. We would need to vote now? Yes, thank you. All right. Item four is a recommendation to adjust the pay scale for McKenna Taylor at the Hamilton Recreation Center from $10 per hour to $10.75 per hour. She's a recent hire for us, doing a good job, and we need to change her pay scale by 75 cents.
Ross?
Got a motion from Wade, second?
I'll say.
Second from Ross, all those in favor of that adjustment? Thank you. She's not working 40 hours a week. She is working more like 30 hours per week, I believe, something like that. Item five is to announce that Chad Lee will be hired as our new sanitation worker for the Hamilton Sanitation Department, and we need a motion to hire Chad.
Make that motion.
A motion from Scott, we need a second.
Sorry.
Second from Ross, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And a recommendation to pay Chad $17.64 per hour for this position. We need a motion to pay him.
Motion.
Got a motion from Ross, we need a second.
Second.
Second from Scott Robertson, all those in favor? Thank you. To announce that Jimmy Galbert will be hired as a new APOS Law Enforcement Certified Police Officer for the Hamilton Police Department, and that'll be a new hire. And he is APOS certified and doesn't have any bounty, only his time served and all that stuff. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, he has 11 years of service. This is still our last vacant tenant in the department, so we look forward to having him onboard.
When can you start?
September 30, I believe.
We got a motion, we need a second. All those in favor of that hire? Okay. And then a recommendation to pay Jimmy at $21.84 per hour for his position. We need a motion on his pay. Got a motion from Sherry?
Second.
Second from Scott Robertson, all those in favor? Thank you. Item nine, this is going to take a little explaining here, but it's long, but I'm going to read the whole matter. NTM Bauer has requested a refund of $61,419.60 for consumers' used taxes paid on exempt items during the timeframe from January 2020 through September 2021. The review for this request was completed by the Avenue Insight and Analytics, and their findings are as follows. The auditors reviewed the taxpayers' records and determined that many of the invoices included in the refund request either fell outside the statute of limitations or had no taxes accrued or remitted for specific invoices. Audit managers for the Alabama Audit Division of Avenue Insights and Analytics have determined that the valid invoices amounted to $27,567.27 and should be refunded to NTM Bauer Corporation. The recommendation is to make the refund the amount of $27,567.27 in consumer use taxes that were collected from January 2020 through September 2021 back to NTM Bauer Corporation. Any discussion or questions about that note?
This is just taxes they pay, but actually what it's supposed to be? Is that right? They're supposed to be?
On new renovations or equipment.
Yeah, I understand.
Supposed to be exempt.
I'll make a motion to pay it.
Wade made the motion to make this refund to NTM Bauer. We need a second. Scott Robertson made a second on that. All those in favor of this refund? Thank you. I think that's the rightful thing to do. Their claim was for $61,419, but the audit only revealed that $27,567 was due in the audit. Okay, and we have item 10 is a recommendation to start the notification process of an upcoming public notice hearing that will be held at the October 21 city council meeting for the consideration of closing a portion of Lone Star Drive. And that's something that will be coming up later. We'll order to get the process started so we can have the public hearing. We need to go ahead and do the public notice notification hearing.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Ross made the motion to get this process started, we need a second for that.
I'll say.
Scott Tara made the second. All in favor of starting the proceedings? This will be the Lone Star Drive that runs through the properties where the new apartment complex is supposed to be built. And I talked with Scott, Jimmy Strickland, this afternoon, and he says that he'll follow the process all the way through, put the right language in it at the proper time if it falls reality.
Mr. Lee, have they some department complex?
We don't have any specifics. I did have a visit from one of the developers about a week ago. He's still in good spirits about it, still working on the plan and getting their partnerships together and everything. So it looks like they're going forward with it.
But we'll only close the street if they go forward with it.
Yeah, that's the way we're going to pass. If they go forward with it and the public doesn't object, then we'd be willing to disclose it. We've got another item here. It's item 11, and that is a recommendation to approve the purchase of 6.03 acres of land referred to as the Lawhorn Property located across County Highway 42 from the C of Hamilton Track Complex. The purchase price of this property is $126,630. Funds to pay for the purchase of the property will be broken down as follows. $60,000 will be taken from the capital improvement fund account, and the remaining balance of $66,630 will come from the Hamilton City General Fund. And we need a motion to move forward on that if there's no discussion.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion from Ross? Got a second from Sherry, those in favor? Okay. We'll be purchasing the land immediately then, and that will work with our new development over there for additional parking, is the plan for this land. That covers the items that are on our agenda tonight, so we have other business tonight that we need to discuss.
I'm just going to ask how Allen's coming along with her.
Going to give Rodney the opportunity to address some of the things that he's working on and a little update on our projects that we're working on. He'll just come aboard and give us that entire presentation, we'd appreciate it.
First of all, I'll start with the County Road 49 project. We received confirmation from A.D. on August 29 that they were going to award us a grant for $162,175 to tie in with Marion County water on County Road 49. So that is in the process. We've already set to have a pre-bid meeting on Thursday, October 10, 10:00 AM. Then the bid opening date is Thursday, October 17, 2:00 PM.
Will this thing then grant cover the cost of that?
It should cover the complete cost of this project.
If it's awarded, everything goes through, how long do you think it takes to do it once everything's approved?
It won't take that long to do the project. The thing that will take probably the most time is getting the material. The cost for a 6-inch PRB, and we don't know how long that'll take yet. And a 6-inch meter, it could take a few months to get those parts.
After colorway?
After colorway? Hopefully we get it done before then. And moving on to the Mitchell Hill Booster Pump Station, we should be hearing something from the CDBG grant in October next month.
That's as much as I agree with?
That grant will be $500,000 if we get it.
What'll all that do? Replace the booster?
Replace that whole booster pump.
Anything else?
Not with that grant. That grant would be to have new pumps, new pump house, new electrical, new everything sitting there.
As you could have?
No, the $500,000 covered it. It's a match grant. The preliminary cost test that we got only before, which I don't know how close that would be now, but that would be about it, about half. County 42 project, I got a call this last week. They're doing some surveying over there on County 42 to survey where the county water ends and where they tie in with us at home County 42. So that's a project in other words. But a lot of these projects, when you're getting grant money, you have to wait on A.D. They say you, and I've been told because of all this ARPA money that they painted out, they're way behind on getting funding out there. So we're, I talked with Eric Charles, they're from Marion County Water. They're doing the same thing, they're sitting back waiting to hear from me on actually on the Franklin County tie-in. The next thing is Cooper柳Stationproject is going out to be rebid. We bid it out before, we got two bids on it. The bids were over-doubled what we anticipated them to be. And the engineers are doing some modifications to the bid package and see if they can get it lowered. Not taking anything away from the project, but trying to go a different route for us to get the price down.
Was it just some miscalculations or what made that fall off?
Well, again, back, we got planned when they did the preliminary cost test and materials hell, over tripled since then. And that's the big key to the project was the material has gone up so high.
A billion dollars, though?
Yeah.
These are parts that go up a billion dollars?
Well, that and some of the way, some of the wording they had in the bid package scared away some of the bidders. So they're going to go back and redo that and try to get the bids to come down, try to get more bidders on it. About 45 minutes ago, we received our first blower back from Canada. Is that for the wastewater plant that we got rebuilt? So it's, one of the blowers is back. The other one is getting ready out now. They're supposed to give me a day ahead of time when everyone shows up and talking and talking and bidding for 30 minutes. That's the way it goes.
We saved a lot of money getting that thing rebuilt versus them divided. Do you want to put them?
Yeah, look, I've got a picture of it with Randy.
Hold on, I'll take you to that stall and look.
They're going to be here probably Thursday or Friday to start rebuilding back here.
What about our high rates, Mr. President? Where we at? Getting that process?
Again, we should hear and not tell her if we got that grant for that stream current monitor. If we didn't get the grant, we may have to look at purchasing the stream current monitor. That has to be inflated before we can even start the high rates.
Other grant for who?
That's a grant through ARC that I buy for, I think, if I can write it. Stream current monitor is going to cost about $14,000, and this grant's for $10,000.
That would have a lot of money. Explain what does that monitor does?
It measures the chemicals in the water. It measures the water in water treatments, you have positive and negative. And it, that stream current monitor evaluates the positives and negatives and adjusts the chemicals to maintain, well, it's got a lot of metrics that's chemical. And it continuously monitors that.
Rodney's also been doing some extensive work on finding different prices for our chemicals we're buying because we think buying in larger bulk could save us some money. And he's also talking to other companies that sell chemicals and trying to bring decision to us on what to do there. So we were going to try to cut our costs as much as we can. Our chemicals just hurting us really bad right now.
They're looking at another bulk tank. The tank we currently have, we've been coughing soda again, was gate to give to us. The tank was, it's a 2,000 gallon tank. If we can get another 2,000 gallon tank to go with it, or get a 5,000 gallon tank to replace it, that would chemical is going to come down to manage the bid price. We're paying a lot to get a hackett paper load. If we can, if we can get that bigger tank or another tank, get a full truck load, we can save three to four thousand dollars every month, just in that one chemical.
Rodney, if you don't care, just on that high rate study, explain to everybody what we're trying to do in the forest, increasing our output per day and?
Currently, our water plant is ready to 2 million gallons a day, 2 million gallons per day. To do a high rate study, you have to go through the A.D. regulations of a high rate study. But you basically have to run that plant 24/7 for a solid month. And it has to be the wettest month of the year. You cannot shut the plant down. Basically, run the water out of the ground, but that's part of it. And what they would do is permit us to 3 million gallons a day instead of 2. You have to go through the A.D. process to get permitted to do that.
Delaney, look at what we do to the river volumes. If we pull that extra million gallons?
Yeah, there's a lot goes into a high rate study. You have to, basically, running two pumps at a time still. You're pumping a lot more water. Right now, at 2 million gallons a day, we're pumping like 1,440 gallons a day.
Are we close to 2 million gallons a day now?
No, we're right at the median average.
When it was originally built, was it built to pass, go up to 4?
It supposedly was built to go up to 4. But that's, that's, it's built for that. I mean, that's not the way it's currently built.
It's not built for that, but it was capable.
Designed to that.
But it could. And if I'm understanding right, there's never been a study like this, nobody's ever planned this. We've had it on customers and so. If we had a big water customer as an industry, we'd be able to take care of this with help. If nothing, you know, somebody needs tremendous amount of water, we'd be kind of able to.
Yeah, I think that's very, very important, that we'd be able to take care of a large volume of water user. If they should show up at our door, I don't know what that sounds like, we can't furnish them. That'd be a bad thing. This is the opposite. Rodney, we appreciate you bringing forward our projects and what we're doing on them, our time factors, the fact that things are coming in higher than we ever anticipated. These engineers that do our plan just, they're with Apple, they're just playing in a league and over on the lift basin down here. They just couldn't understand it at all. But as you know, things changed. When COVID came along and the workforce changed, the prices escalated and inflation's hit in every direction. Vipers just going out of sight. Every kind of bidding goes, water is outside. Rodney, you got anything more to connect to us tonight?
No.
Give you a chance to talk.
No, it's not tonight, we got one on retirement in December. It'd be hard to replace it, we didn't believe, Allen Reed believed, so.
Have you heard anything on our new garbage truck yet?
No, they said we're supposed to be in the fourth quarter or so. Fact, fact, based on the outlook of end of year.
You had one traded, but we chose to push it into the next budget.
Yes.
Back up to ownership of it.
We weren't going to get it before, now we're not.
Chief Carter, you got anything else for us to comment?
No, sir, other than the homecoming parade is Thursday. So if you're in the downtown area Thursday afternoon, just be patient. There will be road closures. We'll try to have officers in those highly congested areas. But just be patient, know the parade will be happening, and just be safe.
I suppose it comes without, we're working on it.
Allen's working on the matters of the water rates for us. Should have had those finished up sometime this week. Get a little brief to the next course session. We're looking for a man to make the motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
Scott Tara made that motion. Scott Robertson made a second, all those in favor of adjournment? Thank y'all for coming tonight, appreciate it. Appreciate it.
From a small dent to major collision repair, Hamilton Paint and Body is here for you. Owners Kim Guin would like to say thank you for your business.
Northwest Alabama heating cooler blowing away our competition.
Hello, I'm Richard Kitchens, owner of Sports Gallery here on the Court Square in Hamilton. Would like to thank all of our customers and thank you for watching the Hamilton City Council Meeting.
Hi, my name is Randy Whitehead, President and CEO of Peoples Trust Bank. I invite you to view the live streaming of Hamilton City Council Meetings every first and third Monday at 6:00 p.m.
Take your perfect stay at the Holiday Inn in Guin off of I-22. Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us. Call us at (205) 468-4625.
I'm Rick Chambers with Marion County Funeral Home and Scribe Memorial Chapel in Russell, Alabama. This is Glenn Cochran, our manager out here. Under the laws of Alabama that was passed in 2002, a funeral establishment has to be certified with the state and carrying certificate of authority before they can even talk to anyone when the time comes is guaranteed to be there.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Guin to Sulligent. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at (205) 921-6712.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you with five locations serving seven counties. You don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.